Okay, I believe we are interpretation setup. We're recording. We are live. Here.
We're good Jennifer?
I need one more second. Okay, we should be ready to go ahead and get started.
Okay, called order for the meeting for October 12, 2021. And for those of you who are just coming online, we had an executive session. We ran just a little bit late, so apologize. Thanks for giving us a little grace on the time. We're going to start with our flag salute with Director Pyros.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Director Pyros. Appreciate that. Okay. Before we start, the Newbury's, I'm gonna review the agenda first. There we go.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
Does Dr. Morlock need to give the little blurb for the translation?
Yes, thank you. You ready?
Yep, yep.
Got her. Thank you. Go over the agenda tonight. We'll start with public comments. Then we'll go to board and superintendent comments. While the consent agenda for reports and presentations tonight, we have a National Bullying Prevention Month proclamation. We have a monthly financial report from Nikki Fowler. We have an enrollment report from Greg Cosco. And under new business tonight, we have resolution 202104 authorizing credit and financial agreements for property Nikki Fowler. Then we'll go to future agenda items and we'll adjourn. So we're a few minutes behind schedule if you're looking at your timeframes on there. I'm gonna go ahead and read this before we go to public comments. Jennifer, you pretty close to being ready? Okay, the Newbury School Board invites and encourages citizens attendance and involvement. The Board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns, or compliments. Thank you for submitting a request to speak. In order to conduct a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to two minutes. Requests to speak during the meeting are not accepted. When called, please state your name, relationship to the district, place of residence, and the subject you will address. The Board may choose not to address your request if your topic is outside the Board governance scope. We ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We also remind you that due to the judiciary nature of the Board's role in resolving personnel issues, we cannot hear comments specific to staff or incidents involving current issues under review in the Board complaint process. I also ask that your comments focus on Board members' actions and refrain from personal or character attacks. As we go into this, try to be ready. And our Board Secretary Jennifer Nelson will call on you. And so if you can stand by, that would be awesome. And here we go.
Okay, I've had a few people who have said that they've been unable to attend. I'm gonna try and get our time screen up here. And I'm looking for first person Sarah Morgan. I'm having a hard time finding them. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up Jackson Foster. I can't find Sarah just yet. And then Kristin Stoller will be on standby.
Hello, are you guys able to hear and see me?
I can hear you.
You can see me too?
I think so. I'm not sure. Cause my screen's being used. Right, whenever you're ready.
All right. Hi, Board members. My name is Jackson Foster. I am a junior at Newburgh High School and I live in Newburgh. It made me how short some of the memory spans in here are because the concept of Black Lives Matter has been explained to you guys time and time again. And yet you choose to ignore or believe false information. But let's be real here. It's because the majority four of this group do not care about LGBT or BIPOC students. You guys have this, you guys need to get this in your head. The pride flag is not political. Black Lives Matter is not political. You guys are making this town a horrible place to live for our students. Basic human rights and feeling safe in school are not political, but you guys are trying to make it that way. You guys realize how much of the struggle you are making it for kids to go to school? I have friends leaving the district and no longer attending person in-person school because you guys are allowing it to become such an unsafe place. I know people who have been called racial and homophobic slurs, and it's only the first month of school. It truly baffles me how people who haven't been to school in decades are getting to decide what is best for our district. You guys are choosing to bring the hate in your hearts and destroy our district. It's very sad. Watch. I've gone to Newbury School District my whole life and the recent events have made me very ashamed that I'm going to, I'm going to have Newburgh on my diploma. You guys have failed our students, families, and teachers and community as a whole. Our BIPOC students, as well as our students in the LGBT plus community deserve better. And I hope and pray that starts with the majority four of you being removed from this group for your awful behavior. I know, I hope someday you were able to get the smallest amount of education because you are all in dire need of it. Thank you. And thank you to Brandy, Ines, and Rebecca for your email responses and hard work. Thank you, guys.
I am pulling up Kristin Stoller. Kristin, are you there?
Hello? Can you hear me and see me? It's hard to tell. The screen is black.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I live in Newburgh. I'm the mother of three Newburgh Public School students. I am the owner of Shaheenland Valley Dance Academy and the co-founder of the Community Wellness Collective. I'm also the co-founder of Wayne Country Pride. I'm here to beg you to change course before we have more tragic loss of our Newburgh youth. I am personally aware of two Newburgh High School students that identify as LGBTQ plus that have been placed in inpatient mental health care in the last month due to suicidal ideation. The importance of this information is that it reminds me of the time when we lost six Newburgh youth by suicide in a two-year span. Five of the six identified as LGBTQ. People close to them shared that the students experienced deep pain for not being seen or supported by their families, peers, community, and namely school. Directors Brown, Dehart, Powell, and Shannon, if you truly care about students, then you would stop passing policies that further alienate and discriminate against our underrepresented student population. I give the rest of my time to my daughter Beta.
Hi, my name is Beta Coats and I'm an LGBTQ plus student at Newburgh High School. During my middle school years, I was amazed to see how inclusive our schools were with pride flags and Black Lives Matter flags in our classrooms. I was excited and happy to be a part of Newburgh. However, now that I have moved on to high school and with the current ban, I am only saddened and embarrassed of what Newburgh has become. I once had, or I have lost the feeling of safety that I once had at school. And it's being stripped away by straight, white, and cisgendered adults who have a problem with a colorful flag and a flag of equality, both of which were only created to spread love and peace. Another thing that angers me is how many students have spoken up and how you guys have not listened to them. Not only should you be listening, but more importantly, taking into account what students have to say because we, the students, are the most affected, not the parents. Thank you.
Please do not allow our community to experience tragic loss in order to learn this horrible lesson again.
Okay, I'll be pulling up Warren Atkins and Michael Gunn is on standby.
Hello, is my audio and video working?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let me get started. Hi, my name is Warren Atkins. I'm a student of the Newburgh Public School District. As a member of the LGBTQ plus community, I have been shocked, horrified, and disgusted by the actions of certain members of the Board. The pride and BLM flags are symbols of love, not hate. You may claim that the American flag represents all, but I believe that the American flag only intends to represent everyone. However, not everyone feels represented, and your foolish actions are only compounding the issue. You also claim that pride and BLM flags should not be shown because they're controversial. If this is true, why don't you ban the cross? Just because not everyone is Christian does not mean you would ban this item. Many students, including myself, endure chastisement and rudeness because of things that are out of our control. Pride and BLM flags in classrooms are not only reassurance that a teacher will always be there for you, no matter who you are, but a sign of safety and acceptance. Attempting to remove these signs of love and hope will not only offend minority groups, bring fear into the day-to-day lives. The slave trade Snapchat group, blackface staff members, and Proud Boy showing up in our town are all actions of people emboldened by the messages you are sending. The Board's actions are blatantly racist and homophobic and have created great fear and worry in our community. Please consider the effect that your choices have on your students. Thank you for your time.
I'm pulling up Michael Gunn. On standby is Angela Katz. Okay, Michael Gunn, can you turn on your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just not popping. You hear me, right? Okay. My name is Mike Gunn. I've been a lifelong resident of Newburgh Dundee. I live in Dundee now. I am, I would take umbrage at what the first three speakers said with all due respect. I would, I would ask them to go to the mission statement of Black Lives Matter, and Black Lives Matter is a subversive Marxist organization that is organized to overthrow the government. But at any rate, I would take umbrage with the, this, this petition to recall one of your, one of the school board members is appalling. He's being recalled simply because people don't like his decisions. Now, here's the situation. There are four members that got elected based upon a conservative platform that they want to restore some kind of normalcy to the schools. I drove by a sign that said, recall Brian Shannon. Make students number one priority. What a misnomer. If you were concerned about making students of number one priority, you would teach them reading, writing, arithmetic, civics, etc., instead of trying to jam a political agenda down their throats. Now, I'm also appalled at the manner in which the left-wing people have attempted to quote bully the other four members of the school board that are making decisions they don't like. You, you purport to be a unifying portion of society, yet this bullying, contacting people, employers, etc. I'm not saying the three of you have done it, but I don't see any condemnation you put out associated with all this social media diatribe that's come out against the four school board members. This is appalling. Now, I would say that the three minority school board members, there are certain people out here that think there's a certain reason to recall you based upon the actions that you have done or exhibited at the school board meetings. I also want to touch on the fact that one of these prior speakers said thank you to the three board members for their emails. I never received one email on an email that I sent approximately three weeks ago that had an open invitation to the minority school board members to try to convince me.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. I am pulling up Angela Katz.
Am I good to go, Jen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let me just get my little thing here that I'm gonna read. Okay. Um, thank you, Newburgh School Board, for taking the time to hear my public comment tonight. I am a parent of two students, sorry, Edwards Elementary and a school counselor at Newburgh High School. Um, in my role as school counselor, I had the opportunity last Wednesday to be at Ewing Young Elementary where fourth and fifth graders had a lesson on anti-bullying. After talking about what bullies are, what power imbalances, and how to stop bullying, students signed the following pledge. They signed, "I believe that everybody has the right to live in a community where they feel safe, included, valued, and accepted regardless of differences. I pledge to be respectful of others and to be an upstander." Watching these fourth and fifth graders pledge to a community of safety, inclusion, and acceptance made me feel hopeful, given our current climate. I teared up thinking of my high school students who don't feel safe and included right now. I wonder over time how we move from pledges of safety and inclusion to policy inclusion. How do we, in the name of neutrality, lose compassion for those around us? How do we pledge safety, inclusion, and acceptance, but actively choose to disregard what our most vulnerable students say they need in order to feel safe and accepted at school? I too signed the pledge last week. I take the responsibility of providing a safe space for students seriously, and that includes the physical space of my office. Some say that signs and symbols aren't needed for a student to feel safe, but I can tell you as someone who is in the school every day, meeting with students, that it does matter. I'm wondering if you and Good Conscious could sign that same pledge? Could you and Good Conscious say that you have listened to the voices of marginalized students, the same voices that experience bullying at the highest rates? Could you believe that everybody has the right to live in a community where they feel safe, included, and valued? I'm almost done. Tonight, Director Brown will read the Anti-Bullying Proclamation. While the words and sentiment are nice and hopeful, your previous actions do not support the proclamation. What I do know is right now there are many working in our district that show up every day and can stand behind that proclamation. We will continue to do the work on the ground to provide a community of safety, inclusion, and acceptance for all students. My hope is that moving forward, you will do the same. Thank you for listening to my comments tonight.
Yeah, I am working on bringing up Darren Thonstad. And on standby is Melissa Tindall.
Yeah, she didn't hear me?
Um, I heard something.
Um. Okay.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay. All right, I will get started then. Um, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Darren Thonstad and I'm a sixth grader at Mountain View Middle School. And recently I've watched the board meetings in frustration of certain board members' actions like passing policies which to me as a student, I am the person these policies will affect the most because I am a student of the district. I am currently in shock of the new policy to ban symbols of love and acceptance to our BIPOC and LGBTQ plus community, which I am speaking of the policy to ban symbols like Black Lives Matter and pride flags. I am frustrated and confused about how the school district, district, my school district, would pass this policy. This policy was made by certain board members who have the majority vote, and these board members have decided to group these symbols of love and acceptance in with symbols of hate. These acts, in my opinion, is not the best way to go for the district nor the best thing for the student body as you are taking away symbols that create a loving and accepting and safe environment to all on students. I am confused because to me this is a bad decision and in fact seems racist to me as a student. So you can claim that there is no racism in this community, but I believe that there is still systematic racism in this community. As even when I was in fourth or fifth grade, when I was waiting for the bus to arrive, my friend was discriminated against and called the brown kid. In fact, the racism in this community is so bad, we made national news because a few NHS joint students joined a Snapchat slave trade group chat in an attempt to trade some African-American students as slaves. Even opposing sports teams have knelt during the national anthem when playing a Newburgh sports team in protest of the recent decisions of our district. So tonight I ask you board members to reconsider and outlet personal beliefs and politics, cloud your judgment, and get in the way of doing your job and doing what's best for the students. So board members, I ask you to revoke the policy to ban symbols like Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ plus pride flags from schools because of someone once said greatness is hateless. Thank you.
Hey, I am promoting Melissa Tindall. And on standby is Greg Aldridge.
Okay, got me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Melissa Tindall and I am a mother of three kids that go to the school district. And um, it's quite crazy that this is still going on. Um, and how people feel that a flag apparently means so much. Unfortunately, yes, I am not on their side of having a child who is um, the LGBTQ, and whatnot. But anyways, I just wanted to say that um, me and lots of other parents definitely agree with the decision that the Board had made. And I found it very frustrating to watch that there were other board members trying to make it seem like there's like another agenda behind all this when all they're trying to do is get back to education. Like, are you serious right now? Like, it's, it's very sad that the kids are so focused on something that they shouldn't be focusing on. Like, take that outside of the school like they're trying to do and focus on what's important in school. There's a thing called bullying, bully prevention month. Oh my gracious. Um, like, no matter what, a flag isn't gonna determine how somebody's gonna um, treat another person, unfortunately. And um, they're still gonna bully their social media. I mean, you can't say a flag and hung up in a school is gonna prevent a child from committing suicide. Unfortunately, that's been going on for far too long and it's very, very extremely unfortunate. But it's gonna happen unfortunately, no matter what too. And the schools are very welcoming and they have been. And I know the teachers are very supportive. And I am very sorry that these kids are going through this, but enough is enough. And they just need to get on with the education and stick to that. And not everyone's gonna agree. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, I am looking for Greg Aldridge. And I believe I just have a first name, so I'm going to see. I can promote that person to see if they are who we're looking for. Greg? I have Greg up on the panel. Can you unmute? Just let us know if you're the person who signed up to speak tonight. Okay, um. Maybe not. I will be looking for Jim Talt. I promoted Jim, but I don't seem on the panel yet. Let's try it again. Oh. I'm not sure what's going on. One second, please. Okay, I can't promote Jim up to the panel for some reason. And I just received a message from Greg. He's having difficulty with the unmute button. Let me see if I can. Apologize. Not sure what's going on.
And you're doing great. Thank you. We appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Okay, I have Jim up on the panel. Jim, can you unmute and see if we can hear you?
Well, how's that? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. And I'll work on Greg.
How about video?
I don't know. I can't see. I'm sharing a timer, so.
Oh, okay. Well, last time you couldn't find me either. I'm seeing me, but anyway. Learning will take place. We'll figure it out for the future. So do you have the timer started?
Yes.
Oh, there I am. Okay, well, Newburgh resident Jim Tall with family members within the district. Thank you for zooming me in. I'm here tonight because my wife and I didn't get a response to two recent emails we sent to district. One was sent on September 15th, and it was only sent to the superintendent. The other was sent October 4th, and it was addressed to the superintendent, but the whole board was copied. I don't know. Maybe you didn't get the emails. Maybe you did respond and I didn't get your response, despite what my kids think. The internet does not always work. Uh, maybe you didn't respond due to intention or oversight. I can't know. So that's why I thought I'd zoom in today and ask you to check on those two emails. The October 4th letter asked a question regarding controversial reading material within our schools. And anyway, we didn't know any other way to find an answer except to ask the question of you. So I please check on the email and either resend or send a response and we would appreciate it. And thank you very much for listening.
Hey, I'm trying to pull Greg Aldridge up to the panel again.
Am I here?
Yes.
Oh, good.
We did it.
Okay, thank you. So Rebecca, hi, I'm Greg Aldridge. I'm a teacher. Rebecca Pyros has been a friend of mine for a long time. And I wanted to tell her I appreciate her leading the flag salute. And the flag salute is an honor. And I would like to see everyone, new board members, old board members, uh, participate in that. And I think a lot of Participate in that and I think a lot of people would enjoy that too. So let me get to my two points. Now I know a lot of people on the board. Well, I only know a few. I know Rebecca's been a friend of mine. Day's been a friend of mine. He's well respected at the high school. I met some of you when you were running. And I tried to meet everybody and I couldn't and I've talked to Director Penner. I dearly want to get to know everybody. But the one thing I want to emphasize is I've been looking at some of the social media, which I don't. And I don't believe any of you are. Have lived anything other than lives of quality. So let's keep the debate at the highest order possible. And don't use unoperationalized terms that are just used as baseball bats. Let's keep communicating with one another. Now, when I was at the high school. Uh, and Karen Pugsley was um. Uh, my boss. Curriculum issues come up from time to time between parents and students. So do issues over values. So do issues over personalities. And she was very good at resolving all of those. So as we move forward. I just want to keep in mind that if we communicate with each other, I. It was reported to me that one of the board members talked to a teacher the other day. And they had a great conversation. And, and I hope we can do more of that because that is what is going to help us move through this period. So thank you for having me.
Okay. I am promoting Robert Suppy to the panel for comments and on standby Cassandra Crossman.
Mr. Suppy?
There we go. There we go. Have you got me?
We do.
Okay, I'm Robert Suppy, Newburgh resident. Topic is the political activities policy. At the September twenty eighth meeting, Director Shannon stated, quote. It just says that teachers can't display political symbols at work while they're on school time. That should not be, that should not be controversial, end quote. When I heard this, I wondered if the director had actually read the policy. The policy prohibits displays related to a quote. Political, quasi-political or controversial topic. The director's statement completely overlooks the controversial topic part. I find that especially ironic when the direct, when what the director stated. Quote, should not be controversial clearly is a controversial topic by the definition of this policy. I asked the board to provide an example of something that doesn't fit the policy's definition of controversial topic. I asked about this in my September fourteenth testimony, but contrary to your policy BDDH that I cited, it was never answered. Virtually all issues are controversial topics. Is that really what the board wants with this policy? For example, under this policy, may a teacher post the Declaration of Independence? U.S. Constitution or original Oregon Constitution on the classroom wall? Clearly, they're all controversial topics by your definition. I cited numerous examples of how the majority of this board has chosen not to follow their own policies. Can we expect that the board will allow district employees to show the same disregard? When the political activity policy is violated? I suspect not. I asked the chair why it is appropriate to expect others to follow policy when the majority of the board failed to do the same. At that meeting, there was discussion about how too much time had already been spent on this topic and that it all needed to stop. If this were an honest concern, the simple and obvious solution would have been to never initiate the policy that was adopted. Instead, the board has passed a policy that because of its very broad scope and the unprofessional way in which it was written. Has opened a can of worms that will demand a great deal of staff time and eventually. Likely more board time to try to manage what the board has created. I will close by simply stating I expect far better from local elected officials. Thank you.
Okay, I am promoting Cassandra Crossman. And Delia Martin will be on standby.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Cassandra Crossman. I am a sped educational assistant at Shahealan Valley Middle School. Being an autistic neurodivergent educator and teaching and working with neurodivergent students. I know the importance of creating an inclusive, accepting and supportive environment for all of our students. When I was a student myself, I learned how it felt to be bullied, to be excluded, to be ostracized, all because of my identity. I was treated differently because by my peers for no other reason than just being myself. And the reason that I do what I do and the reason why I work here is primarily to support students who are just like myself. Who feel that they are different and who may feel unseen and unheard just because of their identity. And the sad truth is that students who are marginalized by their race, by their sexual or gender identity. Or their disability are more likely to be bullied or to be discriminated against. And creating an inclusive and supportive environment for marginalized students starts by the messages that we send our students. This includes the language and the symbols that we use. When we as educators set up our classrooms and our office spaces, we think about our community values. Who is included? Who is being represented? Whose stories are we telling and whose stories are we emitting? Symbols and language alone will not fix or undo the harm that has already been done to marginalized students in our community. We must commit to do better for these students. The inclusive and affirming symbols created by and for marginalized communities can tell our students that we do care about them, that they are valued. And taking that ability away from staff to display these symbols of solidarity and inclusiveness is heartbreaking and cruel. Please reflect on your recent decision and remember that what we do now is setting an example for not just our schools, but all the schools that are watching us right now. I hope that we can send a better message to these schools of unity, inclusion and community. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Delia and I'm in the seventh grade at COA. I'm gonna be talking about bullying prevention. Respect for others is, is an important part of bullying prevention. One way we can respect our fellow human beings is by saying their names correctly. As someone who constantly has my name mispronounced, I can tell you it is very annoying. So it angers me when I hear other people's names mispronounced. As representatives of our school district and as people who should be leading that by example for us kids. I would ask. Board members to make effort to show basic respect to Director Penya by saying her name correctly. She has asked before to have her name pronounced right and it's very disrespectful that people continue to say it wrong. Bullying prevention starts with the adults in the room and. It includes things as simple as pronouncing people's names correctly. Thank you for your time.
Chair Brown, that is the end of the list for tonight.
You got it all done?
Yes.
All right. Good job, Jennifer. Appreciate you. Well, um, as we were going into that uh, tonight, we've had. Different opinions on how we picked. We had eighteen total sign up and we were gonna go sixteen at two minutes to stay within our. Our timeframe plus transitions, but chose to go with eighteen because it was just so close to the number, but. Apparently a few people couldn't make it in tonight. Uh, so. Uh, thank you for everybody that called in. Appreciate you guys sharing your, your thoughts and concerns. And we will. Move on here to our next step. So our next thing is going to be board and superintendent comments. And so I'm gonna go. Just around the, the board here. I'm gonna start with Rebecca Pyros. Rebecca, you wanna go first?
All right. I want to thank Greg Cascola and Dr. Joe Morlock for the new segment in the superintendent's memo. That what's right with our school. I think that's a great. Avenue of showing what we're doing right in our school district because we do have a great school district. And I thank you for, for including that news item. I also want to thank Director Penya for her. Introduction to pronouns and the information she sent to all the board members about pronouns. And um. I watched it and I learned that it's, it's being respectful of people's choices. And that's all we want is to be able to validate each other's choices. And to show respect to them. And thirdly, October is Blindness Awareness Month. And as I've been blind now for six years, I've learned. And, and has have had a lot of help through, through this time with adaptive equipment. Um, and people making accommodations for me. But I thought about the students in our district. Who have to deal with accommodations, accessibility and adaptability. And I talked to Ann Zeal and she let me know that there are six hundred and sixty-two students. Who have individual education plans. And two of those students are people, are students with visual impairment. And then we have forty-seven students who's, who are. Going through the process of developing an IEP. And then we have a hundred and sixty-four students who have a five oh four plan. That helps them with accommodations and that just means. That, that, that's about fifteen percent of our student population. And that means our services, our special services. Our, our special education teachers, our educational assistants. They do a lot of work to help each student learn at, at their own rate. And at their own ability and it's a great work they do and I appreciate it so much. For, for helping each student be able to thrive and to be the best they can. And I also have one last note. I know the Personnel Committee is meeting tomorrow. To decide on student representatives. And I understand there are four volunteers for the position. And my vote would be to go for all four. I think it's a wonderful educational experience for students to become involved in government. And to see that the actual workings and to, to be involved. I was a park commissioner at age seventeen in my hometown. And then I was a state representative for a. A state program on, on highway safety and it was a great opportunity for me. As a young person and I want to celebrate with all the students who, who volunteered. And I would welcome to be a mentor for, for them. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Director. Rebecca, I appreciate that. We'll go to Director Powell.
Hi. So I would like to read a couple of sentences from some emails that came in and I really liked how. How a parent wrote. Um, into the board, how, how they put it. So let's teach them by our examples. That we will not single out any of them, that we will stand in unison for them. As a whole and deal with the bullies, those who discriminate, those who. Do unkind things, teach them to respect each other. By our behavior, to stand for all. I challenge. I challenge us all to. Implement the statement to remove any and all barriers that hinders a student ability to thrive. Let's encourage. All rules that protect all children. No bullying, no discrimination and end it there. Don't call one group out as special over another. When we do that, someone will always be considered less. Don't separate these children further. Let's be the force that draws them together. And there was another one that came in of a gay married couple and. And it was really interesting to, to read their perspective. What they have gone through and how the. Flags um. That they say that the, they don't need the flags to represent. And they don't need to see them and to be validated, to feel validated. So as humans, we are much more. Than just our sexual preference and, and refuse to be limited. Limit our lens to live in that narrow view. And so it was really. Brought to my attention that they can do that without waving a destructive and divisive flags and banner. And they were sadly, they remain to be anonymous at this time for fear of repercussions that. Um, from those from the poison, opposing view. And how that again speaks volumes of how people cannot speak out of how these things are affecting them. So I really appreciated that letter that came in. It kind of gave us a perspective. Of their point of view as well, from somebody that lives in that in community. So I just wanted to thank the letters, the people that do write in and call that we do hear you. And we appreciate you writing into us and, and giving us your viewpoints. So thank you.
Thanks Renee. Uh, next we'll go with Director Penya.
Mis comentarios esta noche serán en español ya que nuestra comunidad. Le ha faltado comunicación sobre lo que está pasando en nuestro distrito. Sabemos que el odio existe, sabemos que el racismo existe y que ha estado en nuestra comunidad. Todo el tiempo que hemos estado viviendo aquí. Pero hoy en día tenemos personas en poder. Que realmente están cambiando la forma de educar a nuestros estudiantes. Y están haciendo que nuestros estudiantes se sientan incómodos, no bienvenidos. Y haya mucho más miedo al ir a la escuela. Con eso es un resumen básico de lo que está pasando y. Quiero que se involucren. Quiero que ustedes también manden correos, nos llamen, nos manden mensajes porque estoy aquí para servirles como una voz. Tenemos interpretación y queremos que se involucren lo más posible. Porque su voz también cuenta. Son parte de este distrito. Y una parte importante ya que estamos creciendo como comunidad. Les pido que sigan involucrándose y por favor contáctenme que estoy para servirles.
Okay, um, any? You wanna tell us, I mean for us to don't speak Spanish, do you wanna go farther than that? Tell us what was said or just leave it at that?
Joe, we, our interpreters, you know, are usually able to interpret from either language, right? So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Okay, Director Shannon, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Director Penner.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I wanna echo what Renee said about thanking those who've spent the last couple of months. Reaching out to the school board in emails and public comments and in conversations. You know, we've, we've heard a lot of honest and emotional experiences from so many people who have been sharing their deeply personal and painful stories. And I just want to say thank you and especially to the students for bravely speaking up and saying, this is what I need to succeed. Uh, tonight I want to spend a little time expressing gratitude. I am grateful to our community for stepping up and supporting our kids and educators. This generosity while not surprising is vital. People are showing up for our kids in ways that are building them up. From a hundred thousand dollar donation from the Murray Lanthrum Foundation to support some of our most vulnerable students. To the Resource Room volunteer who has no children in the school but still shows up and connects with kids when they need it. We are a community of caring and engaged people. And these are just a couple of the examples of what I'm sure are hundreds, if not thousands of acts of. And these are just a couple of the examples of what I'm sure are hundreds, if not thousands, of acts of caring people supporting our schools and the humans that are in them. They've not let the divisive and ugly actions of a few slow down their work. It's quite the opposite. They're using this time to learn, to grow and to help. I am ever an optimist, and I believe that this challenging time in our community's history will be marked not by hate, but by love and acceptance. This too shall pass, and in the meantime, keep looking for the helpers. Those people who are centering student and staff needs and voices. Those who recognize that simply existing is not political and that simply loving is not controversial. Thank you to every person in our school buildings who is helping to tie a kid's shoe. To every human who listens when a student is struggling to be seen. And to every person who is the one to turn off the lights after the long day. What you do is invaluable, and your commitment to the kids in our district is the actual story. Nothing that happens tonight or at any school board meeting determines the worth of your work or the value of your being. Express gratitude when you see someone helping. Dig deep when you're exhausted and the end of your rope. Ask for help. We are in this together. You're not alone, and we are undoubtedly better together.
Great. Thanks, Brandy. Director Dehart.
Yeah, thanks, Chair Brown. No, I'm just happy to be here tonight. I think the only thing I want to touch on is recently, one of the teachers went public and they called me out personally about the flag that I have behind me. Apparently, it's offensive to some people and some people take it as virtue signaling. So I I, you know, had a conversation with Dr. Joe and you, Chair Brown, and kind of told the story on how that came to be. Um, when we were sworn in that first night in July, um, one of the things that struck me is we did the Pledge of Allegiance to Flag Salute was that there was no um flag to face and a lot of people don't know it, but for U S Code, Chapter One, Section Four deals with, you know, uh, proper rendering of uh uh, respect to our flag. And it actually talks about when you, when you do the pledge of allegiance, that you stand of attention and face the flag and and put your right hand over your heart and and state the pledge of allegiance. So that's really why I put that flag up behind me. It's not virtue signaling, but it does have a special meaning to me. The last deployment I had in twenty ten uh in the Middle East, that flag was flown on the four aircraft that I supported as a as a maintenance officer there. It was flown on the U two, the R Q four, the A Y X and the K C ten, so it's got special meaning to me. Beyond the the symbology of the the colors, the stripes and the and the stars that are contained in it. So that's all I got to say about that.
Thanks, Trevor. Appreciate that. Sometimes little explanation helps a lot, so I hope that helps people. I guess for me tonight, um, my comment is you know, we're going to do a a national bullying prevention month for our students. And I'm looking forward to reading that. Um, I think we can all attest to when we went through school. I know I'm probably the oldest person here. It's a difficult time. Uh, there was bullying back. I think the beginning of Newburgh Public Schools in nineteen oh nine, even though the schools have really been around since eighteen eighties, but you know, bullying is something that's 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 always hard to go through. And it's always something that, you know, we can make a proclamation. And and it's important that we, as a a board, uh, put that out. But you don't get to pick and choose, you know, when to be kind. And that's happening throughout our community. And and, uh, you know, I was in the schools for twenty years and you definitely see kids not being kind. Most times it's not racial, it's it's just that they're not very kind sometimes. And sometimes it's staff and sometimes it's students. And you can't just say, um, you got to live it. And right now in this community, um, you know, I can speak on my own behalf that the bullying from the adults is rampant. If we're going to tell our kids and ask our kids to to do an anti-bullying thing, I think everybody is watching this meeting tonight. And I guess our ratings are going up, so that's a good thing. We have more people listening than ever before. Dr. Joe and I have talked about that being on Zoom does have its its merits there. Sometimes we get more people involved, so there is something good that's came out of this pandemic. But the the fact that we're going to ask kids to not bully. I could write down pages of the way I've been bullied. And it's it's uh, it's from adults, it's not the kids. And there's even people in this meeting, there's people that have, you know, we're going to call in and talk about how one person feels. We got to talk about how everybody feels. So on my challenge, everybody is look in the mirror tonight when you brush your teeth and say, do I bully? And I say a lot of adults in this community do bully. So before you point the finger at some board members or some teachers or some other people, look yourself in the mirror and say, do you bully? Because it's happening. It's really happening. And I'm trying to be strong here, and if I wasn't going to coaching mode, I'd even be stronger. Because it is a real thing. And everybody on this window that I'm looking at right now knows it's true. You absolutely know it's true. And it's got to stop. And if we're going to sign this resolution tonight, don't sign it if you're not going to stop doing it. Don't sign this resolution. Tell our kids not to do it when you are doing it. Or people you know are doing it. Call them up and tell them to stop. So if we're going to say no more bullying, let's stop no more bullying. Next up, Consent Agenda.
And Dr. Morlock's comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Joe, my bad. Thanks, Rebecca. Appreciate that.
I'll keep it short, Dave, just in case.
Oh, you want.
It actually is very short. I did, uh, first of all, I do want to thank the speakers tonight. I was actually glad we could get everybody in uh, who wish to speak, so that was uh, nice to see. Um, I also want to, and you'll see it in the Consent Agenda you're about to go through, uh, welcome our new staff. As you can see, we've been hiring all the way through uh, October. And so it's great that we've been able to continue to attract some folks and get them in. And um, some of them were temporarily with us, very temporarily, and then we were able to hire them to keep them. So welcome, I've gotten to meet, I think, almost all of them, and I will certainly drop by all their classrooms. So welcome to our new staff to Newburgh Schools. I'm glad that you're here. Um, and then finally, I wanted to thank uh, the uh, schools that I've visited in the last week. Edwards, Mabel Rush, uh, Shanley Valley Middle School and Dundee uh, for allowing me to come into their classrooms. Uh, great to see them back in classroom rotations. Um, I did want to especially thank Mrs. Bachmeyer's class out of Dundee today for letting me sit in on their writing process as they were working on their monster in a jar uh, writing uh, project. So that was a a good thing for me to help out with. I got to do a few spelling words. I guess it'll show off my fifth grade spelling, spelling skills. I could pull that off. But anyway, thanks to all the staff for welcoming me into classrooms at those four, and I've got several more uh, in the next few weeks. I look forward to to seeing all the things that are going on uh, out there in our buildings. So that's all I have for you tonight, Dave.
You sure?
I'm sure. I'll keep it in short.
Almost didn't lay it. Thanks, Director Pyros, for letting us remember that guy. Uh, next up is Consent Agenda. Um, I think it's always important, uh, if any of these people are listening, to welcome uh, them. So uh, we'll get a recommendation here at the end of this, but the personal recommendations, you know, we're approving the uh, the minutes from the regular board meeting on August tenth and the special meeting was an executive session and a special board meeting retreat, August twenty fourth, uh, those minutes. The personal recommendations are Maria Pintor, teacher Shan Valley Middle School, Noah Rehos, teacher Mountain View Middle School, uh, Perla Gamez, teacher Edwards Elementary, Michelle Sterner, teacher at Mabel Rush Elementary, Bailey Weber, teacher at Newburgh High School, um, Sean Castalas, teacher Ewan Young, and Ashley Toda, teacher at John Austin Elementary. So those are all the ones who are accepting the uh, the temporary contracts, probationary contracts for, so welcome to all those. And then also accepting the license resignation. Uh, Mackenzie Elton, teacher at Edwards Elementary. Mackenzie, good luck in whatever you go do. And as far as that, uh, the recommendation is to move this Newburgh School District Board of Directors, approve the consent agenda as presented. So.
Well, we'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Thanks, Brandy and Rebecca. Appreciate that. Any discussion on that? Everybody good? Okay, uh, if you agree with that, raise your right hand. And we are seven zero on that. Thanks, you guys. Appreciate that very much. And I said that again. I'm very sorry. I'll say you all. I did that again. So Director Penya, I'm sorry I said that. Um, so now we're going to move into the um uh, the National Bullying Prevention Month. We definitely had a speech on that. So the board will declare the month of October two thousand twenty one as National Bullying Prevention Month for the Newburgh School District and uh, read a proclamation in support of bullying prevention activities. So I'm going to read that for you guys and uh, we'll go out there. The National Bullying Prevention Month proclamation, whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, sexual or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools and through technology such as the internet and cellular phones. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at a greater risk of engaging in more serious and violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful and intimidated. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors does hereby proclaim October as National Bullying Prevention Month and hereby commits to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our schools safer for all children. That is our proclamation for that. We need to go for a vote on that. Is that what we do on that proclamation? No, we're just good.
Uh, you're good after your proclamation.
What's that?
I said you're good after you proclaim it.
Go, um, okay. I've got that to sign. Appreciate that, you guys. Uh, so I'll let me know if there's something I need to sign on that, because I got a form here that Dr. Joe wants to sign. If there's something official on that. So uh, next up is uh, Nikki Fowler with the Monthly Financial Report. So Nikki, you are on.
Great, thank you. Um, the financial reports right now, the any fund balances up the end of September are just over two point or nine point two million dollars. Um, at that point, we had most of the payroll um, encumbered for the year. Um, we still have a process to adjust insurance and some things like that. So some some of those encumbrances will change going into October, because those policies come in effect as of October first. Um, but this is a lot closer than what you saw last month without all those payrolls in there. Um, and last month, uh, there was a question on function twenty two ten. I looked at that. Um, and there's just a, there's an employee I need to move out to a grant. Um, so that'll be reflected in next month's um, report to correct that. Um, and I was hopeful that we would have an updated S S F estimate, uh, but we do not yet. Um, and so hopefully next month we'll have that a little, a better estimate where we are based on our current enrollment. From how it's looking right now, um, with our numbers down, we'll be relying on last year's enrollment numbers. So the hold harmless rule that we talk about through the budgeting process um, would be in effect. Um, and so we'd be looking at about a hundred and fifty drop from the prior year as far as enrollment. Um, the first week in November, our auditors will be there to audit our records from last year to be done by the end of December. Um, and that's about all. Are there any questions on the reports?
I've got a quick one, Nikki. Thank you for the update on the twenty two ten. Um, this is just going to be my question every month, I think, until I finally understand it. So uh, same kind of logic, so twenty one forty line, twenty one forty psychological services were at a negative a hundred and thirty seven percent. Do you know or have ideas?
Yeah, and that's another one. That's a one of our, that's for psychologists. So lots of times those funds, those employees will be shifted over to I D E A. So it depends, lots of times we have difficulty hiring on staff and we'll contract outs. Those can float between the grant and the general fund. So that will even out and be pushed over, um, a piece of that over to um, the I D A fund. And you'll see that also in the technology line that's a little bit over. We have funds and grants that are going to pick up a little bit of that, so we just need to shift some of those purchases for that. I don't know what that was. Is there anything else? Any other questions?
Yeah, Nikki, I had one that kind of, you know, uh, I think it would help. I've been wanting to ask this for quite a while. I just never get it done in a meeting uh, ever since I started on the board, but um, maybe talk to Dr. Joe about this, but on the twenty sixth, we have the work session, right? It would be, you know, maybe ten fifteen minutes if we could kind of zoom in a little bit on some of your terminologies and just break it down a bit more, because you're really good and really quick through this stuff. And there's sometimes, like Brandy's question right there, you know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I can try to step through some of that. I mean, through the budget process, I do a bit more of that. So probably as you go through that process next year, you'll pick up on a lot more of that stuff, but certainly I can touch on some of that. Um, if you have specifics, just shoot me an email, whether it's explaining the S S F piece, which is our our biggest funding. It's um, and I can send some cheat sheets on the functions um, and that kind of stuff, just so it's easier to interpret.
Awesome. I I I'll do that for sure. Uh, I think again, Brandy's question around twenty one forty. If any of the board members have anything, because I think sometimes, I know for me, I can't speak for everybody else. We look at this, we kind of go through it pretty quick, because you're pretty efficient, and I'm like, still kind of like, huh? And I don't want to make a mistake, so I would just like to uh, not questioning you, it's more so I can understand you better, so.
Well, and as I've talked about before too, it would probably be good at some point. I'm open to anybody coming to visit and spending some time going over the budget and understanding it. Um, during the budget process, I do, people come to me individually and I'll spend two hours just going over what these things mean. Um, so it would probably be helpful for, you know, any of the new members or even more senior members to kind of recap some of those. So just feel free to reach out and um, we'll set it up at time.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That would be great.
Nikki, um, if this wasn't a hold harmless year, what sort of swing in our budget would we be looking at based on our enrollment numbers?
Um, well, we would be looking at about three million. So right now we're at about one point three.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Any other questions there from even the board? Are you sure? Everybody's good? Okay. Nikki, thanks again. What?
Thank you.
I will definitely reach out to you and then any board should reach out to 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 me or Nikki. We can, we can get that, uh, if you have any, just even if it's a simple question, so uh, it would be great.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next up, we're Enrollment Report with Greg Cosco.
Thank you, Chair Brown, and thank you, board members. Uh, it's my responsibility tonight to share with you our enrollment report and uh, which means it's my responsibility to share news that's not good for any of us in this process. We want to be able to serve the students, students of our district and and uh, want to move through. So tonight I'll be going through where our enrollment is, what school capacity is really briefly, and then a little bit of analysis on these numbers uh, as we've looked through them. So this is in your packet. You will have uh, seen this earlier. It just has a breakdown by school of where our enrollment has gone over the last several years. Um, we are, there's not really a consistent pattern. You can see that some schools have increased and some have decreased. And the net uh, loss from last year is a hundred and nineteen students. And again, knowing as we talked about last year, that last year itself was quite a drop with COVID in the process. So we are down a hundred and nineteen students, which is down two point seven percent total for the district. Uh, the biggest chunk of that comes from COA, and so we'll talk about that a little bit more uh, later in this presentation. This is a overview of where we were with uh, Project This is a overview of where we were with projected versus actual enrollment. And this is something we started tracking several years ago when we had issues with the budget because recognizing that our budget is always based on projected and wanting to see how we're doing in regard to those things. We made a projected estimate for this year of forty six hundred, which was to gain back a hundred and fifty students. And we are at the place where we lost a hundred and nineteen. And so we're below where we were projecting in that process. But as Nikki mentioned earlier, it is a hold harmless year. And so we will be, what that means is we are funded at the lowest, at the highest level of the last two years. And so that means that we will end up being funded on last year's numbers for this year's budget. And this is just a little bit bigger picture going farther back in time to two thousand. And you can, you can see that the last couple of years, we are in sort of unprecedented territory due to a lot of different factors and, and we're at a place where our enrollment is at a low, low level. So how does this decline compare to other districts? We have a hundred and nineteen less students. As I said, that's a two point seven percent decline. And I reached out to a total of eight districts and heard back from four. So two of them were in the packet. Canby School District lost two percent over last year. Sherwood gained one point nine percent. And then I have two more to add that were not in the packet that I just received yesterday and today. Hillsborough School District is down one percent and Beaverton is down zero point eight percent. So you can see from that, that of the comparables that I was able to get responses from other districts, we are, we are the one that was suffered the most decline. But it is also clear that this is something that is happening still statewide with, and we don't have, even in the case of Sherwood, where there's a one point nine percent gain. What their registrar said is that they are quite a bit lower than they were projecting to be at this year. So this is an issue that is that is a little bit more severe in our district, but is definitely not something that is alone statewide. We put the school capacity up here primarily because this has been part of the report for a long time. But as you can see there with the low, low enrollment, we don't really have any places where schools are pushing up against capacity. The one sort of exception to that is Edwards, which is at four hundred and forty six with a building capacity of five hundred and, and we are, that is one of the things with the bond with trying to not only convert portable classrooms to permanent classrooms, but also add enough classrooms to make sure that we can cover the issues there at Edwards. So what are the major factors affecting enrollment? And what I did with this, with this process was to look at our overall district numbers, did not go through the process of tracking individual students at this time. So the total decline from last year is a hundred and nineteen students. Last year, remember we had quite a few kindergartners who because of this pandemic, just did not enroll in the school. And so last year there was a really large drop in our kindergarten class. What we see this year is kind of a, a part way back sort of situation where we are thirty four more students in our kindergarten class this year than last year. Two night, that's two hundred and ninety versus two hundred and fifty six last year. However, that still is forty less than what our roughly three hundred and thirty average was for the several years before that. So we got about sort of halfway back with our kindergarten class to where we have, where we've been in previous years. And then the minus forty seven from the class of twenty twenty one, that's just what I wanted to give. As you think of, as all the district students move up a grade from year to year, you obviously use your, lose your graduating senior class. And if you want to, if you retain every other grade person and brought in a kindergarten class that was exactly the same, you would be right at identical enrollment. And what we have this year is our kindergarten class of two hundred and ninety is forty seven less than our graduating class of twenty twenty one that we lost last year. So that's part of the reason of the net decline. We've had a net fourteen students who have transferred out of the district since June. Since the end of last year, forty six students have transferred in and sixty out for that net transfer loss of fourteen. And that is improved over last year's net loss of forty five at this time. We've had fifty eight students since last year transferred to other online schools where last year we saw a hundred and thirty two. So that also has declined from last year. One place where it has gone up is we've seen fifty six students move to homeschool this year. Where last year we just had twenty eight moving to that homeschool and that in itself was quite a bit higher than in the previous years. So one of the conclusions we can draw is that in this situation of pandemic and different situations, we have had more students choosing the homeschool option. I wanted to take some time to look a little bit more closely at the COA numbers, which is our Shahelema Online Academy. There are a lot of online academy options out there and we have a really robust program as well. And saw a large increase in our COA program last year as folks went through the pandemic. So last year, just to kind of break down those numbers and look at them more specifically, we had two hundred and twenty six students in our elementary COA program. This year we're at a hundred and nineteen, which is a hundred and seven less this year than last year. Middle school last year, we had a hundred and fifty nine. This year it's down to fifty six. So a loss of about a hundred and three students in our COA program. And then what I did just to kind of get a comparison is, is looked at our in-person elementary numbers. So separate from COA, what are our total elementary students in person this year compared to last year? And we saw a gain of fifty seven students in our in-person elementary. And we saw a gain of forty two students in our in-person middle school over last year. So if you kind of do the math, one of the, one hypothesis, hypothesis I have as I look at that is that about half of COA last year returned to in-person and there's about half that are unaccounted for. And the way that I get those numbers is the hundred and seven minus the fifty seven plus that we have in person. Again, that's not tracking each individual student. I don't know for sure that, that that's exactly how it planned out, but that, that seems to make sense of the data to me as I look at this process. So this is kind of a slide to give you an idea of just the overall numbers and where things came from. So if we look at all the things combined, senior loss with a smaller kindergarten class, transfers to other online schools or other schools, homeschooling, COA loss, we put all those together. What does that look like? Kindergarten, as I said, is down forty seven compared to the class of twenty twenty one. Transfers and homeschool total was a loss of a hundred and twenty eight. And COA is a loss of two hundred and ten. So if you add up all of those losses that we see, net losses that we see, that's at three eighty five. But as you remember, our net loss as a total district is a hundred and nineteen students. So we did add, even in this climate of a loss of students, we did add at least two hundred and sixty six students who were not enrolled last year to make, that's how those numbers work out in that process. So we just want to give time for any questions that you might have in this process. I know this isn't good news for us. And obviously the financial questions, I will defer to Nikki. But if you have any other specific questions about the enrollment, I'm glad to try to answer those.
Greg, do we have any idea, has there been any tracking of where the students went and why they went?
I did not track that down this year. There has been a lot going on and just did not take the time to track down all of those processes. So we've had some turnover at the district office. Rena used to be the one who would kind of coordinate that. So I don't know if we have those spreadsheets going at the local school levels as we did in the past, but I did not, I did not take the time to look those up at this point.
Will it be available later on, like Shannon did a, a presentation like in February?
Yes, in February, we always, always have the more detailed transfer report that does address all of those issues. And so this fall enrollment report is something we've instituted over the last couple of years when we've seen declining enrollment to try and track down what those numbers are. So this one is more focused on where we are in the numbers as opposed to all the details of why they've gone to different places.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Greg, I had a couple, I guess more statements than anything, but I remember last year or something, you know, we were talking about population rates, you know, changing for the lower, you know, I just remember kind of going back to a little bit of history here. Something that we can't control. So the students starting K one, it's kind of nice that they're up a little bit there. You know, I think, you know, when I look at it's like the COVID pandemic, the mask, the online, the COA, the catalyst, the people moving, you know, there's a lot of people are moving from our state too, you know, because of mandates, political things, vaccines, you know, there's, there's all that that we, you know, that are kind of out of our control. So I, I was just like, I look back at two thousand eighteen and Catalyst was up fifty one, COA is up one fifty five. And then every other school was, was down quite a bit. So I guess my big question is, is, I know you can't answer this really right now, but it's like moving forward, you know, we've gone through this terrible time, you know, to, to try to run schools. There's some pretty big reasons, you know, out there besides the fact that somebody might not like our schools. But moving forward, you know, that's a pretty big dip from two thousand eighteen to twenty one. I know we have to budget based on where we're at, but you know, say two thousand twenty four, you know, it's like, those are pretty big drops to each one of those schools. We're definitely not going to run out of space, except Edwards is the only one close. So I guess my, not really a question, but those are some of the reasons we've had in the past, you know, that you've brought up and there's a lot of factors in there that are just out of our control. But you know, I think Rebecca's question is, I, I know everybody's bored with nothing to do, you know, but you know, finding out those reasons and stuff is, is pretty good, but I don't know with everything going on, I guess it's kind of crazy that our numbers are, they were for sure going to be down. So I know I'm kind of rambling here, but I'm just going back to some of your past statements that like those were good things and they're still happening to us.
Sure. I, I think what I'll just address in that is, is why I chose not to put in the comparisons to the PSU enrollment report is that we definitely seem to be in a, in a, I'm not going to speculate on all the variety of reasons. There's a whole lot of reasons of why folks are not attending, but COVID and the pandemic in this year have led to a place where we are so far off of those enrollment projections that they didn't seem really worthwhile looking at at this point. And so like your numbers of like, like the twenty eighteen to now, what we saw is a big movement last year from in-person to COA online and to Catalyst. And what we've seen this year is a, a movement of about half of those folks back to in-person. And then a few, a few more folks that have been a net loss from that. So I think definitely where we will be in the process with all of our schools, which is going on right now. And I know it's happening at Catalyst, I know it's happening at high school and in different places is working really hard to find where these students are, bring them back into place, get them into programs so that they can earn the credits that they need to move to graduation. And we'll, we'll continue doing that, doing that work. And like, like we said in the answer to Rebecca's question, when we have the transfer report in February, we'll, we'll have some more details on, on why folks have gone to different places.
And one more quick question, maybe for you and Dr. Joe too on this. I mean, are there just a lot of kids out there? You know, not just Newburgh, but every community. I mean, with the numbers down everywhere, it just seemed like there's got to be a lot of kids are just not enrolled. I mean, is that a definitely a real bigger issue than we're, we're thinking? I don't think that's just a Newburgh problem.
It is. I mean, it's, it's difficult to get the comparison numbers. I've been trying to get folks from different districts and similar to us, there's a lot going on. But yes, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of students just unaccounted for. And, and those tend to be students from, from our most vulnerable population. I know that you know, we're seeing that a lot of catalysts that, that finding the students, it's always a, a challenge getting those students to come to school. And it's been exacerbated over the last eighteen months in that process. And then I interrupted Joe, so I'll let him take over.
No, no, I was interrupting you. Yeah. So the people who've had the growth in Marion Polk and Yamhill County in homeschool, somewhere between seventy five and almost a hundred kids per district. McMenville, Silver Falls, Woodburn, North Marion Cascade, Central, North Santiam. Salem itself had six hundred and forty five kid differential for homeschool. So we're looking at about a thirteen, almost fourteen hundred kid increase in students who have registered at the EST. Not everybody registers at the EST who do homeschool. Most do or many do. So just looking at our three county area, Marion Polk and Yamhill, you know, there's almost fourteen hundred kids who have registered at the EST to be homeschooled over what it was last year. And that was already an increase from the fall of twenty nineteen of almost fifteen hundred kids as well. So in the last, if you, if you take the, the last two years, you're talking about over three thousand students choosing to register to be at homeschool. Again, not everybody registers, but let's just assume that the majority of them do. You know, over the three county, the tri-county area, that's a lot of kids choosing homeschool over their traditional schools. But that list of schools that I just read to you all had a loss of between seventy and almost a hundred students just in our area besides Salem, which was six hundred and forty five. Those are significant numbers.
Yeah, and that one, Joe, a couple of year and a half ago, two years ago, we were at the Portland for the OSBA conference. And so it would have been fourteen years when Eagle Point started this, but their superintendent and some of their key people made a presentation. It's the best one I've ever and in twelve years, they identified when they first came into their roles in that school district. They looked at every aspect of a large footprint and was, and they said attendance was their number one issue that was causing poor grades, poor graduation rates, you know, the whole nine yards that goes with it. And when they spoke to us in that meeting at, in Portland, they said we just completed year twelve. We're in the top five in the state, the attendance top five in reading scores, math scores. And they, they labeled it all. It took them twelve years to get that attendance thing down. And I just say that because it was one of the most encouraging things I've had since I've been on the board was, that was a great story. And that's a pretty tough district down there and their footprint's huge. And they just weren't, weren't gonna not put that as their number one priority, getting kids in the classroom and the scores and all the other graduation rates went, went up with that. So I know you guys haven't ever thought about that, but I'm just saying that was an encouraging.
No, I think that's, I think it's a really good point, Dave. And I think wanted to give some shout outs to a lot of our folks in our system who are doing that work and, and also distinguish between enrollment and attendance. Attendance rates, like they're talking about Eagle Point is the percentage of students who are showing up who are already enrolled. So and, and we have worked hard on that and have brought those attendance numbers up as well. Charlotte Jasper does great work. Our counselors do great work. We have people following up all, at all of our schools or our enrolled kids to get them into place and to get them there. So, so the, again, the, that is a really important issue. And it is, it is also a little bit distinct from actual enrollment of like students who are just not, not choosing to be here, period. And are either pursuing other options or, or are, you know, slipping through the cracks in that process.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thanks. Any other questions for, for Greg on any of this or Dr. Joe? Anybody?
What you said Greg about, thank you especially to the Catalyst staff members because seeing that Catalyst number go down so dramatically is definitely a concern because we know unfortunately oftentimes those are the kiddos that need the most support. And I appreciate all the efforts at trying to track down students and ensure that they're you know, in safe situations and that they are learning. So just thank you to everybody in the district who's working on that.
Yeah, and let me just look at those numbers again. So again, Catalyst itself is not a huge decline. And part of that has to do, let me speak to that specifically because all throughout the pandemic last year, they, the way the Catalyst program works is the first time you enter into Catalyst, you go through a six-week program called Discovery. And Catalyst did not do any discovery classes last year at all in the pandemic because it was the kinds of things they're doing that they're teaching study skills, they're teaching attendance skills, they're teaching regulation, they're teaching all kinds of these things that students need to succeed. And they really can't do that well in an online environment. So they've had their first discovery classes to get new students in just in this first six weeks. And so part of the loss of that is just simply, they graduated a bunch of kids and they had no new kids coming in because of discovery. But they are, they are working on that. And so the fact that one of the things that I did is separate out the numbers so that this year's numbers matched what we had reported last year. So that when you're looking, the numbers that you're looking at Catalyst are including in both of those years, last year and this year, it's including COA High School students as well, because there's just a lot of overlap in Catalyst. So, so I wanted to be clear about that, that some of that attrition is just simply because they haven't had new students coming in because of discovery. And now they're back on track and doing that process.
Great. Thank you for that.
Greg, I just want to say thanks. I know this is a, a big job to pull us together. So, and it's, it's impossible to get it down perfect. So thank you.
Yep, thank you. You're welcome.
I also want to thank all the secretaries. I know what work goes into monthly counts and making sure each student is counted in each program. And it's a lot of work they do for us.
Absolutely. Very grateful as well. Absolutely, very grateful as well.
Yeah, I mean, Joe and Greg get all the credit, but the secretaries are doing all the work, so. Okay, any more questions for Greg? We're good? Okay, thanks again, Greg. Uh, Dr. Joe, a question for you on this next one, um. You know, as we talked about earlier and, and our meeting before the regular meeting, um, does this change this one at all? Coming up, um, I'm just asking.
Well, I think it does, uh, based upon the nature of the questions that we had uh, earlier. Because if you move this resolution forward, then we would proceed uh, with the financing and so. This may be something that uh, the board wishes to um, put. Well, it, it's really up to you if you guys want to talk about uh, um, talk about this and move ahead with the resolution or if you would like to. Table it for our next meeting.
I'll move to table.
Yeah, I, I guess for me, it's like before I second that, it'd be like, can we discuss it right now and not vote on this? Or can we get some of these questions out of the way? Um, or can we table it and, because we got to do it by the twenty-six according to uh, oh man, I forget his name there, that he made that comment to us. I'm sorry.
It's K- Casey Cunningham from.
So if we table, uh, we really have to be ready for that twenty-six, so we can make a decision, are everybody comfortable with that?
I would ask if there are uh, detailed questions that we get those um, asked as soon as possible, so we can come up with those, so we can. You can connect with me and with Nikki directly. Uh, and that would really help us get the information to you as the things that you're looking for the most, we want to make sure we can provide. Uh, any and all of those things, but uh. That would be good to have those well in advance and we can certainly meet uh, in between if there are certain folks who'd like to do that and get very uh, specific questions out of the way.
Everybody, everybody clear on that? Okay, so we'll table that, I second that motion. Rebecca, do you?
We need to vote on it then.
I, I'd like to just have a little discussion real quick. Yeah, not about the actual process or, you know, anything, but it, it's more of um, I'm going to support this motion, but I definitely have concerns around it. Because we are leaving a very little amount of time for our staff to, you know, move forward if that's where the board goes, so. Just to echo what Dr. Morlock said, if, you know, you have questions, if you need clarification, if you want to know more about the bond process, you know, any of that, please. Um, approach, you know, reach out to staff, reach out to people who've served on the bond committees, anything like that, just so that. You know, when, if, if, if we do move this forward to tabling it to the next meeting, we are all coming, you know, totally informed and prepared. To that meeting, since it's going to be a super tight.
Got it, thank you. Rebecca, did you have something there?
No, I was just saying we needed to vote on it.
Well, we have a motion and a second and we've got our discussion, any more discussion? Okay, if you're in favor of table on this motion, please raise your hand. Uh, it looks like we are, I'm looking at that seven zero, so thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate that. You guys are going to be stunned here, it's eight forty-one, holy smokes, nobody's seen this side of nine o'clock forever. Our last thing there is uh, oh Nikki Fowler, you're off the hot seat there, you don't have to talk again, so. Thanks for being ready though Nikki, uh, future agenda items, the next meeting is a work session, so. Uh, last time we got some good things talked about, so I think we're kind of uh, used to that, I think now we can, we can all step it up. So uh, please um. I'd like to challenge each director to have a question, a subject, a matter that we uh, we can get in there and get some really good discussions going on on the twenty-six. And uh, we'll let you know if there's anything special. Board Secretary Jennifer is good about letting me know if we got to get something on that meeting. You know, that needs to be voted on, for example, we'll do that early in the meeting and get it out of the way. But uh, kind of get creative with your questions and uh, something that, like for last time, for example, we, we talked to. Quite a bit about, you know, three different subjects and, and uh, we got everybody talking, that was a good thing, so. Let's uh, my challenge is for all seven of us to come up with a really solid question and actually for. For all eight of us, if Dr. Joe has something he'd like to, to get discussed in that, that meeting too, uh, that would be awesome for everybody.
Can I add, can I request that the board add um, a discussion in that meeting around what, what is happening with complaints and the complaint, complaint process? So that we all um, fully are aware of, of the process and what's going on with that.
Funny you would say that, we just, Dr. Joe and I talked about that today, so we're going to meet and then we will, that's, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good one, there's just certain things, you guys, I like going through this with uh, Greg Cosgall tonight on the uh. You know, some of the stuff that before our new members have been part of, that he had some comments before, like population rates and things like that, helped the enrollment numbers. When we're, when we're listening to Nikki Fowler talk about the budget, um, you know, I just know that I. I kind of blitz buy stuff really fast there and I want to start to get those questions in between the questions, so. You know, think about your questions you have or that's something that would make us better as a board that we can start talking about, so.
All right, Dave, I have a couple of things. I'm, I was a bit confused, um, that I had sent you a, a, an agenda item about a proclamation of approval. And you, you te- you emailed me back saying that it was going to be put on the agenda for next meeting. But it is, but it isn't on the agenda, so I, I, but, but. Board meeting efficiencies, all students are important. OSBA policy and board media interviews are all on the, on the agenda. But not the, the three issues I suggested, the, especially the proclamation of, of um, approval. And um, you said you wanted to give that more time, but I feel that. Because we, we passed the policy. Very quickly to, to deal with problems, that we also need to address a, a solution to some of our problems. And that's what, what, what the, the proclamation was, was to address. And so I, I'm a bit confused, how, how, why my three issues that I had written to you. Were not included in the, in the um, agenda and how do you get items on the agenda? Because I thought, I thought board policy said that um, we could submit something to you. Or that we could um, ask the board to pass and I don't remember having a vote on those four issues. If, if that has to be done for my three issues.
Okay, I'm trying to catch up with all that, I think that uh, those issues were going to be put on the twenty-six and we wanted to talk about that, so. I'll get together with uh, Jennifer Nelson and, and uh, we'll go over our, our agenda, how we're moving forward on that, but uh. If we get that in a discussion, yeah, that's the kind of stuff we need to discuss.
Yeah, but, but can you explain to me why the um, proclamation was not put on the agenda?
Well, I think we had, you know, we had our uh, meeting already pretty well set for this meeting, we're trying to stay. On that and then like, some of the year proclamations or motions is a great example of why we can talk about these things in a work session. And see how the whole board feels about it and then we can move forward on it.
But, but they weren't, they weren't listed under the, the um, work session agenda, they were listed down below. To, for, for um, future agenda items.
So I think we were talking about talking about them on a twenty-six during a work session.
But, but they weren't listed in the agendas for the work session, so I just want.
If I may clear things up a little bit, I am the one who produces that forward-looking future agendas meetings and we had already had uh. So many items on our work session from the last one that we moved them over to this one. And your items were new ones that came up and I have not yet been able to discuss with the board chair at our agenda meeting. Which ones will actually be including on this agenda and which ones we won't, so I placed them in the bottom. Um, as work session topics to consider for future dentists, because we do need to talk about which ones are going to come up at this meeting. And that's kind of why they are, how you saw it on that uh, future agendas document. I listed the ones that had been left over from the previous work session, I moved them over to here and then yours came up, they were new ones. I didn't know if we would have enough time to add another three with the five we already had, so that's why it is the way it is and mine's always a tentative thing. And it's only solidified when I actually have the agenda meeting with the chair.
All right, thank you for that clarification, that's why I was, was befuddled by what.
Thanks Jennifer, appreciate that. Okay, so with that said, um, I got the gavel and it is in my car. So I still don't have the gavel in my hand, but I will say uh, that we're going to adjourn this meeting right now. And uh, appreciate all you guys being here tonight, so thank you very much, night you guys.
Thanks everyone.
Thanks, goodnight.